Good evening, everyone. Calling the Tuesday, March 11th, public hearing to order. I will start this public hearing by reading our school mission statement. The Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners and cultivates caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Can I have our roll call, please?
Lauren Vives.
Grace Lockhead.
Madora Champagne.
Lisa Sheldon.
Miriam Goodman.
Victoria Saldaña.
Ingrid Alardi.
I will hand it over to the budget presentation.
Sure. So, thank you all for joining us tonight. We are thrilled to be able to present the proposed fiscal 2026 budget for the Norfolk Public Schools. I think we'd like to start by just acknowledging that we're fortunate to be part of a community that regularly shows such strong support for education, not just fiscally through town meetings, but also through all the parents and community members that regularly volunteer in our schools, whether it's lunch duty or for special events and programs that attend our concerts and our evening events. So, thank you to all of you for the work that you do to help our schools and help us provide the best education possible for all of our children. We have a brief budget presentation tonight. We'd like to start by just sharing the district mission and vision statement, which you can see up on the screen. Norfolk has always been committed to offering a safe, joyful, challenging learning environment, and we work hard during the budget process to make sure when we have to make reductions or when we're looking to add, that we keep the instructional core at the center of all of our decision-making. So, we work hard to protect programs, academic programs, to provide support where it's needed, and to make sure that any decisions we make will have the greatest yield and return on student achievement and learning. Presentation tonight is divided into six sections. So, we'll start with giving you a brief history of the budget in Norfolk and what that's looked like over time. We'll talk about per pupil spending comparisons and how spending in Norfolk aligns with our comparison communities and our regional neighbors. And then we'll talk about the 2026 budget request specifically. So, what's included in the budget, where we are making some minor reductions, and where we're looking to grow programs. Then we'll talk about enrollment and class size projections, and what we were not able to fund in this budget request that are, that remain critical needs for the Norfolk District. After the presentation, we will take public comment and feedback on the budget from the public. So, starting with the budget history, I think it's really important for the town to be aware, as most of you are, we've had a lot of conversations around this, but enrollment in Norfolk has been steadily growing. So, if you look back in 2015, we had about 825 students in our schools. That number has grown steadily between, over the last 10 years. Entering 2026, we will have 190 students more than we had back when, when we looked at this first at 2015. So, enrollment is growing steadily. It's been a little bit uneven. So, if you look at patterns of growth, the largest growth started at the HL day, which makes a lot of sense. When families are looking for, to move and to find a community, they often come in at the younger grades so that students start within the schools. So, we've seen the greatest growth at the HL day. In 2015, we had 331 students. Currently, we've 454, and that is only K to 2. That does not include our preschool numbers. We have 62 students in our preschool currently. Preschool enrollment is capped at 62 because that's all the space that we have. Back in 2015, all families that were interested in preschool came into the district and registered and started in the program. Currently, the demand has increased significantly, but we don't have space to grow the program. So, we now have seven families approximately on the waitlist at all times for preschool. Again, that shows you the net growth between two buildings over the last 10 years at about 190 students. It's critical to recognize that as the enrollment is growing, that does have a direct impact on how we staff our school, our school buildings, and on budget and budget planning. So, as we add more students to the district, we have over the past 10 years had to add additional classroom teachers in order to maintain appropriate class sizes. We've also added special education teachers. About 19% of our students receive specialized services, so that the population of students within our district receiving services has grown proportionally to the overall growth. So, we've added paraprofessional staff members. We've also had to increase our special subjects staff, so art, music, and wellness. We've added time to the schedules for all of those positions because they've had to pick up and incorporate additional classroom, homeroom classrooms. We've had to increase hours for cafeteria staff at the HL day. Our lunch program begins really with brunch at 10:30 with the first lunch, and that is because we have too many students to have them all eat together at one time. So, we have multiple lunch periods for individual grade levels. We've increased hours for cafeteria staff, and we've also increased general education support. So, we've added reading specialists and math specialists over the years to meet the needs of more students. It hasn't increased frequency or the amount of time students are receiving, but just to address the expanded case loads. Miriam, I think you're doing federal funds?
Yes.
All right.
So, just a little bit about our federal funding. Federal funding is based on student enrollment, and our Title I, Title II, and Title IV funds are based on our low-income numbers. They offset the cost of a part-time math specialist at the HL day, and they also provide funds for professional development programming. The low-income data is pulled from the federal census data, which has historically underestimated the number of students eligible, and in 24, FY24, we were notified that we were in a warning status. So, we were thinking at the end of '24 that we might not be getting our Title I money in FY25. We did end up getting that money, as well as Title II and Title IV as well. So, but there was a year in FY24, in FY23, that we did not have Title I money, and in FY24, that we didn't have Title IV money. So, we're getting all of that now to the tune of a total of $36,000 and change. We, our low-income numbers have risen over time from roughly 4.7% in 2019 to 7.7% in '24. Now they're at 9.03% anticipated for FY26. We believe that that's due to the opening of the Bay State Temporary Respite Center, and we anticipate the funding will continue as a result of that, and that those limited funds, these title grants, will be available next year based on that funding. On the right side of the screen, you'll see federal funding for our special education programs, also based on student enrollment data in those programs, students on IPs. Our IDEA grant funds paraprofessional support for students with special needs. Our IDEA preschool program funds the same paraprofessional for, in our preschool programs, and our sped professional development grant funds professional development and some technology for the special education program. We anticipate that this federal funding is going to remain consistent, and it has remained consistent over the past several years, and we anticipate that we will be getting it next year as well. So, talking a little bit about Chapter 70. Chapter 70 impacts all communities differently. It's a formula, it's formula-based, and it starts with the foundation budget, which is based on three key factors: enrollment, a wage adjustment factor, and inflation. We're going to talk about inflation in a minute as well. The state determines the foundation budget as an amount that is needed to provide an adequate education to the students of Norfolk. From there, they decide what the local contribution should be, how much can Norfolk afford to pay towards that education, and that's based on local effort from property wealth or from income and from municipal revenue growth factor. And then they take the difference between those two, and they backfill it with state aid. So, what's adequate to provide an adequate education? Minus what the community can contribute, backfills state aid. So, our Chapter 70 money this year is comprised, comprises about 22.8% of the FY26 budget. We are what's known as a minimum aid community, which, which basically means we are only going to get the minimum amount determined by the Student Opportunity Act, which is written at $35, at $30 per pupil, but this year has been increased to $75 per pupil at the, at the governance level. So, we, I see that as a floor, so we're only going up from there. So, we'll see. So, this is where our state aid has been since FY11 to FY24. State aid, historically, as it's written into the law, will go up each year. Districts are not going to have a loss of state aid. That's what's called the whole harmless provision. It provides, it allows some stability and predictability. What it doesn't necessarily keep up with is inflation over time. So, the Chapter 70 formula caps out at four and a half percent, caps inflation at four and a half percent. So, when they apply an inflationary rate to all of the pieces of the foundation budget, they cap that inflation rate at four and a half percent. And in specifically in, you know, in the mid-2021 through most of '23, inflation was much higher than four and a half percent, you know, highs of 8% in 2022. So, the formula doesn't account for that. There's also some changes that were made to the formula about a decade ago where they would have, where they changed the law so that any money that you didn't get as a result of the cap on inflation is, is now lost funding. It's no longer made up in future years where it used to be prior. But as you know, we are facing higher costs for instructional materials and utilities and fuel and health, health insurance and other, other items that are just outsourcing that four and a half percent, outpacing that four and a half percent on an annual basis. The Student Opportunity Act did help some of this, but it's, it's, we're still in some areas getting more than four and a half percent increases on certain items, but the cap is there. And obviously, that is going to impact students as we struggle to maintain adequate resources and experienced teachers and smaller class sizes and updated facilities. So, some of the advocacy that can be done, and is being done, is from teachers' unions, from school committees, from state senators, and, and calling lawmakers to, to address the changes to the formula. And so, folks are looking into that. There was a suggestion about adding additional percentage point to the inflation rate or changing law so that any lost funding due to the cap can be made up. So, stay tuned, we'll see where that falls.
So, I'm going to talk a little bit about federal grants opportunities. So, the Massachusetts Department of Education makes funds available to districts through competitive grants, and every year they release, they, is determined by their priorities, and they release the grants for districts to apply. So, for example, it could be to support staffing shortages, support curriculum innovations and adoption, expand professional development, but it changes every year. So, for example, in 2021, there was a social studies grant that was released, but it hasn't been released since then. So, it does, it does change every year. So, we, the district, we've always repeatedly applied to the state to secure grant funding to offset local costs, and unfortunately, Norfolk has been regularly turned down as the district does not qualify as a high-needs community based on demographic and economic data. Priority for state grant funding has been given to communities that are chronically underperforming, rural communities with high percentage of students designated as low-income. Nevertheless, Norfolk Public Schools are still required to comply with new mandates and regulations despite the lack of being able to receive the new revenue sources. So, some of the, as you can see, the grant applications that we have applied since 2021 that we were denied, despite our best efforts, but the ones that we found some success are the regional consortium grants. We were able to get the Regional Behavior Health Grant in 2025. We also were able to get two years in a row our regional Title III to support English-language programming, and, and also back in 2022, '23, we applied as a regional foreign estro-funded, which we did bridge to KP, which is to help sixth graders kind of transition to seventh grade, but that grant has been discontinued. One of the challenges is that a lot of grants we can apply, apply regionally because they are very district-specific. The next part, I know that we've presented on MCAS data a few times already, so I'll go through these pretty quickly, but just kind of just looking through the lens of budget, this is how our, our teaching and learning priorities are set. So, you can see that overall our MCAS scores in English Language Arts have either remained relatively flat or have declined since pre-pandemic. So, you can see the 2019 versus this past year's data of 2024. We definitely need to continue to focus our efforts in raising these scores. For example, Grade IV does show a steady growth over the past three years. We still have not fully recovered to pre-pandemic levels. And as you can see, the MCAS scores in Grades 5 and 6 have shown a gradual decline, which is aligned to the overall trend that we are seeing in Massachusetts. But nevertheless, we do want to kind of see it to start getting closer to our pre-pandemic numbers. I do want to just mention that our screening data indicates an upward trend over, which we presented in our Benchmark and Baseline Report. So, we're hoping that with current interventions or our new ELA program that we have instituted this year, we're going to see improvements in future MCAS. In terms of math, we have put a lot of effort and strengthened math fact fluency across all grade levels the last couple of years, as well as implement a strong MTSS program with targeted interventions for students who are struggling. So, we have, it has led to some steady improvements in math scores from the 2021 post-pandemic dip. All grade levels have shown positive growth, as you can see, between 2021 and 2024. I do want to just emphasize that 2021 had a different test. It was a bridge test, so it's not the best year to compare, but it's still kind of part of our data, so that it would be beneficial for us to see the numbers in each year. As you can see, that actually Grades 3 and 4 achieved, achievements surpassed our pre-COVID levels, which is very encouraging. Grades 5 and 6 continue to show progress towards recovery, but Grade 5 scores do lag behind all the other grade levels. So, this is, continue to be an area of focus for us as well. When I presented the Benchmark and Baseline Report, when we looked at specific domains, when we broke down the MCAS to by skill set, we did, we did identify that we need targeted instructional support in problem-solving, reasoning, and applied mathematics across all grade levels. So, that is one of the things that when we talk about kind of our budget needs and things that we're, that's one of the areas that we're kind of prioritizing for future. And just really quickly, looking at our regional comparisons, so these are the districts that are like communities for us. So, you can see that Norfolk's results exceed regional averages with only a 3% decline since the pre-pandemic levels for, in mathematics. We saw an increase from 60% of students meeting or exceeding expectations in 2023 to 67% in 2024, and we have either aligned or surpassed most of our comparison districts, which is a great show on some of the returns that our students, were able to support our students despite a need for additional resources. The highest-performing districts do remain at 70%. So, we definitely, there's an opportunity to refine our core math instruction and intervention strategies, and hoping with the new math adoption next year that we will continue to see a strong growth in this area. In terms of ELA, so our recovery rate since the pandemic, if we're comparing to our like districts, we're probably in the mid-range compared to the regional districts, reflecting a moderate progress in regaining pre-pandemic proficiency levels. There has been a 12% decline in proficiency since pre, since 2019. It does align with, like I mentioned before, with the broader regional and state trends. And while the decrease reflects the significant academic challenges brought on by the pandemic, I do believe that our ongoing effects, as I mentioned before, the targeted interventions and the adoption of the new program are going to help us reverse some of the last couple of years and for us to see a more upward movement in, in this area.
All right. Per pupil spending, Miriam?
Sure. So, if you look at the per pupil spending graph behind you, you can see that in the last eight years that we spend significantly less than the state average to educate our, our students. In 2017, we came closer to closing that gap. However, you know, post-pandemic, 2020, 2020, and 2021 didn't keep up with the rate of enrollment, enrollment growth at that period of time, and now we're looking at more, currently, a gap of about $4,000, just over $4,000. I think this is exacerbated by the fact that most of our state competitive grants prioritize chronically underperforming districts, or schools with higher percentages of students qualifying as low-income, and so that will exacerbate that gap as well. And our regional comparison communities that we're going to talk about in a second, they also fell below the state average. You're seeing 23 numbers because that's the most recent data that's available. Some districts haven't even finalized their FY24 end-of-year report, which is where some of this is generated from. So, in terms of our per pupil expenditures, and for the purpose of data analysis and review, the Department of Ed comes up with a list of comparable communities based on each district's, either communities that are similar demographically, or similar structurally, or by students, or how you spend, amount of spending. So, we use this set of data to benchmark, as benchmark communities, to evaluate our, our programs, our instruction, our student achievement, attendance rates, class sizes, and other measures of educational quality. And so, we use these districts also to compare per pupil spending and budgeting and staffing rates, and so you can see that we are still spending less than most of our comparison communities. And for the past three years, there have only been three districts under the state average. There are eight now, but consistently under the state average for the past three years. We've been second to last with only Berkeley spending less than us. We now spend roughly $1,579 less than, less per pupil than Rentham, and $1,257 per pupil less than Plainville. There are, of all these communities, you can see that there are eight that spend under the state average, and they're all reflected in green. And again, with only Plainville, Norfolk, and Berkeley consistently falling below. And again, I think that this is a result of the supplementary grant funding that goes to more urban districts who have higher populations of low-income students or are chronically underachieving, and that, that, that makes it difficult for suburban districts to access additional competitive grant funds, as, as you just heard. Our performance, however, significantly outpaces some of our comparison communities who have a much higher per pupil cost. So, for example, Lincoln spends close to 80% more per pupil than Norfolk, but Norfolk's achievement is higher. And, and we should note also that the town of Norfolk allocates revenue, they allocate a comparable percentage of revenue to the schools as, it's comparable to what our neighboring communities allocate to their schools as well. But since there is no commercial revenue in town, the revenue itself, the total funding available, is negatively impacted.
Charter School?
Oh, my charter? Did I miss that? May not have ordered? She could have gone. I think I'm out of order. Okay. So, Charter School. So, Charter School, we certainly believe passionately that all children in Norfolk deserve a high-quality education that promotes academic, social, and emotional development. There's also financial reasons why it's important for the town to invest in our schools, because parents have a choice to send their students to Norfolk Public Schools or to send their students to a charter school. We have two fairly large charter schools in our immediate area, the Van Franklin Charter School, which expanded from 450 to 750 students in the past few years through K to 8, as well as the Foxborough Regional Charter School, and they serve over 1,600 students. And so, when students enroll in a charter school, the money follows the student. Charter schools are funded based on an average, I'll call it, per pupil spending of each of the districts that attend the charter school. So, every student that leaves Norfolk to go to a charter school, the district loses revenue up to the tune of $18,436. And so, so it's important for us to maintain our instructional programs and our class sizes at low levels, and otherwise, we're going to risk significant, a significant loss in funding, and we'll likely lose more in funding than we would save by, by making program cuts or reductions.
So, I'll talk a little bit about the 2026 budget and the budget drivers. So, our budget request that we are bringing forward to the school committee tonight for consideration and to the public for public comment reflects a 4.59% increase over fiscal 2025. It's $16,279,469, and it's a, reflects an increase of about $715,000. The budget request does allow us to meet all of our contractual obligations for cost of living increases, for teacher steps-in-lane changes. It also allows us to make a slight market adjustment to the rates that we pay for Norfolk, for substitute teachers. That is really critical, that we stay current with the market. There's a substitute shortage across the Commonwealth. We have a very difficult time getting enough subs to cover classrooms, and if we fall behind all of our local competitors, the very few subs we have is going to dwindle down further. So, it does fund a, a market adjustment. We are in the process of doing a comprehensive review of our math program, and we will be implementing a new math program next year. Again, we've applied for the state funding to support that adoption. We've been declined in the past. We will reapply if the grant becomes available, but currently, we are budgeting for about half the cost of the new adoption with the intent of negotiating that over, with whatever vendor we choose, to pay the cost of the program over two fiscal years. So, it funds partial adoption of a new math program. We are experiencing an increase in cost for special education and transportation and tuition, so this budget allows us to meet the obligations that we have for specialized services, and it maintains most of our class sizes within the school committee class-size policy limits. In order to achieve this, so a level service budget for the Norfolk Public Schools for this year would have been over a 10% increase, 10.1%. We know that based on the revenue picture for the town, that the town cannot afford a 10% increase in any of the departments. So, the budget subcommittee, Lauren Vives and Peter Spald, and I have been working to reduce the budget request so that it was reasonable and affordable for the town, but trying again to address some of the areas of need that we have. As we look at the MCAS scores, we do have need for additional support and intervention in math, so trying to address that need, maintain our other instructional programs, and find reductions that would have the least impact on our students and our learners. So, we are looking to reduce in this budget two paraprofessional positions. They are special education paraprofessionals. Every year, we have students aging out of the district who may have additional support positions. We have new students coming in. We are able to reduce those two positions without impacting students that require support. So, we're looking to reduce two paraprofessional positions, and a third position we are reallocating. So, you'll see on the right-hand side, we're looking to take a further para reduction and repurpose it as a math paraprofessional support up at the Freeman Kennedy to address those learning gaps that we were talking about, particularly in the upper grades. We do have to reduce 1.6 professional positions. That is one classroom teaching position at the Freeman Kennedy. It is a retirement, so we will not be refilling that position. It will increase class sizes in one of our grade levels, which I'll preview with you when we get to that part of budget presentation. So, one of the professional positions is a retirement that we will not be filling. We are also reducing art at the Freeman Kennedy from .9 to .8, so it's a .1 teaching reduction. It's also a retirement. We have fewer classes next year at the Freeman Kennedy, so we will need less time in the art schedule to accommodate that. So, again, all of these reductions are not actual, we don't anticipate they will be layoffs because we have openings currently for paraprofessional positions that aren't filled, and we have a high turnover. Many of our, I think we're really lucky. We have a lot of paraprofessionals that come to us that are getting their teaching license, and so they, they leave to pursue additional teaching positions, sometimes within the Norfolk schools. We are still trying to finalize a .5 professional position reduction, so we are working through that at the budget subcommittee, but we do anticipate we will have a total of 1.6 reductions in professional positions and an additional .2 reduction in other positions. Again, we're working through those final reductions, but it will be a total of 3.8 FTEs. Other adjustments that we're making, we are in the process of restructuring our business office. We have an HR director who has been with us for over, over 20 years. She may not want me to share that, but for a long time. She may not want me to share that, but for a long time, who will be retiring. We are going to be replacing that position. Instead of an HR director, we'll be hiring HR specialists. It's a different licensure, it's a different requirements for the position. We will partner with the town. The town has, in the past, had an HR director, so we can kind of align our services and support each other. But we're looking to hire a specialist. We are also looking to, we have a business, assistant business manager who is leaving the district, also moving on, actually physically moving. So we are going to be restructuring that position from an assistant business manager to a payroll account, payables position. Again, that's a lower salary, so we will generate some savings for that, but also looking to increase efficiencies and, and work with the town to, to look at the best way to provide those services. On the staffing, this is just a quick snapshot of the budget changes from fiscal '24. So the majority of the cost increase is adjustments for teacher cost of living, steps in lane changes per the collective bargaining agreement. That's about $569,000. We do anticipate saving almost $99,000 in retirements and resignations, so we've deducted that as a savings. Paraprofessionals will be saving about $15,000. That is a reflection of the positions we talked about eliminating, those two positions. But we won't see the full savings from that because we also have to adjust for our cost of living increases for our paraprofessional staff. So that's the difference after those things are accounted for. All other staff, which would be food service, custodial, clerical staff, it's about $34,000 in salary adjustments. As I mentioned earlier, we're looking to increase the substitute rate of pay so that we can retain our qualified subs. And then other contractual benefits that are part of the collective bargaining and individual contracts are about $45,000. So the total net change on the staffing side is $563,697. On the expense side is where we really worked hard to try to make reductions, again, so that we're not impacting classroom positions and instruction. We, the full math adoption would be about $250,000. We will have $125,000 budgeted for it in fiscal year 2026. We'll have to make up the difference the following, the following fiscal year. You can see, as far as services and supplies at FK and HOD, both are down by over $20,000. This is significant because our expense lines for the last probably five years have been level funded, even though inflation's gone up. So our paper supplies costs have gone up. We have not increased, we've actually decreased annually the expense size. So it's very, I would say, it's really tight. We don't have a lot of excess anywhere. Special education instructional services are up in this budget. As I mentioned, we have additional tuitions and transportations we are counting for. Circuit breaker is the state program for reimbursing special education costs, so there is an offset of savings of about 30, close to $38,000 there. Transportation, so our contract that we have with Holmes, the, we will be in the third year, I believe, of our new contract, and the increase for transportation next year is $56,000. Again, district offices, we've reduced further on the supply side. The only two things that are up slightly are facilities maintenance, that's driven by energy costs, the cost of paper towels, paper supplies, is up by about $6,000. And then technology, that's network and infrastructure, is up slightly by $2,700. We have eliminated from this budget all of our capital requests. So we did have budgeted for copier replacement, teacher laptop replacement, other tech equipment. All of that has been taken out of this budget. We are hoping to pursue through the regular capital process in the fall with the town, funding for some of those critical needs. But again, we, that was one of the reductions that we made in order to balance the budget and get closer to what the town can afford to fund. Every year, we work really collaboratively with all of our regional partners and with the town to generate cost savings. About eight or nine years ago, we worked and restructured the facility department. The Norfolk Public Schools reached out to the town to say, you know, are there ways? We had a full-time facilities director just for the schools. We reached out, worked with the town to restructure that department to see if there was a way we could share that service and benefit both the town and schools. We continue to do that. We save about $25,000 on those positions. We also are in the process of looking at merging and sharing more of the facilities department. We share a custodian now, and we staggered that work schedule so that we have somebody that works Saturdays that allowed us to reduce what we budget for overtime for, for weekend and special programs. Two years ago, we worked with Rentham and Plainville, and we saw an opportunity to restructure our food service program. We had prior had a full-time food service director just for Norfolk. We now share a food service director regionally with our other two towns, and we pay a third of that cost. So that generates some additional savings. As we talked earlier, we are in the process of restructuring our business and HR office to generate another $25,000 of savings there. And then we do continue to pursue every opportunity that we find for grant, competitive grants. As Vicki said, the regional grants that we participated in, which means that we've written those grants in partnership with Rentham, Plainville, and King Philip, we have been more successful in securing. So we did access a regional behavioral health grant that funds programs across all four districts. We have several grants that are in process. We're estimating what we will bring in for those grants based on current allocations. There's an opiate settlement grant that we have brought in funding for student impairment programming. Metro West Health has funded a part of a position for us over the past three years, and Carisolus and Project Aware are referral services to support families in accessing outside counseling or wraparound services. And we've funded that through grant funding. So of all of the cost savings in competitive grants we're seeing for 2026, it's about $276,000.
So one way we look at our budget is by thinking about those types of fixed costs that we don't have a lot of discretion over, including salaries, transportation, tuitions for out-of-district placements, and utilities. And those things comprise 93.6% of the FY26 budget. Only 6.4% of the budget is allocated towards what I'm going to call discretionary spending, which includes cost of curriculum materials, textbooks, general classroom supplies, paper, and other expenses. So it's really not a whole lot when you look at the, the whole pie. Another way that we break down the budget as a whole is in terms of our salaries and contracted services, very similarly. But it's important to note that, that at this point, 86.4% of our total budget is committed to salaries. We spend 71.4% on professional salaries for teachers and administrators, 3.5% for clerical salaries, 1.5% for other salaries such as substitutes, assistants, food service, facilities, maintenance, technology. 8.7% goes to services, the majority of which is for our transportation contracts. And 2.9% goes towards curriculum materials, supplies, and 0.7% goes towards expenses which are fixed by contract, like sick leave buyback and other types of contractual obligations for retirement. And, and only, at this point, 1.2% of the FY26 budget is allocated towards funding students placed in out-of-district placements to access the curriculum. And this is dramatically lower than most other districts across the Commonwealth. It's a, it's a small percentage to pay for, for our students to, to be able to access the curriculum.
The class size projections for '25, '26. We are projecting seven sessions of kindergarten. The DAA, most recent demographic study was projecting an enrollment of 148. We opened kindergarten registration right after we returned from winter break in January, and currently, it's trending slightly under that. So the projection was 148. I think we're probably going to see more like 140, 145. So we do think class size will be within the policy limit at kindergarten. Grade one will have seven classrooms. There's seven kindergartens this year, 136. Those are actual, these, the rest of the numbers are based on the number of kids we had in place as of October 1. So 136, class size is projected to be 19.4. Grade two, we have nine first-grade classes. They will be going up to eight second-grade classes. That is a grade level where we have 169 students. The maximum class size policy at HOD for students in K to 2 is 21. So we will be exceeding the maximum class size in grade two. We'll be coming to the school committee at the next month to request that the school committee lift the cap for class size for one year. Part of the complicating issue at HOD is there's not a physical other classroom that we could add. So if we were to try to fund an eighth classroom, it would mean the art room would have to go onto a cart, which totally changes the art curriculum, but we have no other additional space at that building. Grade three will go down to five classrooms. This is the position where we talked about teacher retirement that we won't be filling. Class sizes will be 23.8, which means some classes of 23, some of 24. The budget subcommittee's priority is if Chapter 70 funding increases, or we see additional revenue, that would be the priority for restoring that position and bringing those class sizes down. For fourth grade, we'll have seven classrooms, 143 students, class sizes of 20 and 21. Grade five, there'll be eight sessions, class sizes of 20, 21. And grade six will stay at six, 131 students, class sizes of 21 and 22. Just for comparison, again, this is the same benchmark communities that we compare to. Class size in Norfolk over the last three years has been fairly stable between 20 and 21 students. Next year, it will go back up to 21 because we do have some larger class sizes at specifically grade two and grade three. Prior to, back in 2020, 2019, Norfolk was on the lower end of class size of all of our comparison communities. We had class size averages of 18 and 19. That has steadily grown. We're no longer at the lower end of our comparison communities our class sizes are on, the relatively higher end. We do prioritize smaller class sizes in the lower grade. The class size policy for Freeman is, for grades three to five, is a maximum of 25. So we'll shift to unfunded budget needs. Again, you've seen what is in the 2026 budget. It is a very conservative budget. There were a lot of things that we wanted to address, areas that we would like to see, additional staffing or resources, that we just couldn't fund in the fiscal climate. So Vicki will talk about what some of those things are.
Absolutely. So as you can see in the slide, we've listed some staffing needs that have not been included in the budget. And although our proposed budget does support core needs for our district, we definitely have some, as you can see, restorations that we'd love to bring back, and critically needed funding staffing needs, that we are looking to hopefully restore in the future. For example, as Dr. Lardy has mentioned, we do have higher class sizes in grades two and three. We had to reduce our technology integration department from two teachers. HOD had a tech integration specialist, and so did FK. Now we have one for the district, which does impact the, how the program is, is run. We also have not been able to, we had library assistant positions in both our libraries, which helps support the librarians. They do have a very vast job, not only keeping up with the, upkeep of the library, but also they teach classes. So that has also impacted how our libraries are run. We also have some critically needed positions for technology support. We are very much underfunded in this area. Our break fix, we have a, we have a lot of pulls in that department in terms of being able to upkeep all of our, not only keeping up with all our servers and with all our technology needs. They really do support the district on so many different levels, and they have a small department of three for 1,000 students and 200 staff members. So we're also unable to support the district business office and increase, there's, the office is really minimally staffed, and we've been trying to put a clerical support in that office. We do have our HR department, our payroll department, we have our, our business department, and it's, they're really kind of departments of one. So that is having clerical support for a lot of different tasks that now, you know, we, we can't bring in that help to make the departments run as efficiently as possible, you know? And that's something that we've been looking for the last couple of years. It also increased the district's team chair position, which is needed due to growing enrollment, and also the increase in numbers of students receiving specialized services. So, so that's something that we have also been looking to increase and add, which is a, again, a pretty critical need for our special ed department as well. If we're looking at, I also wanted just to talk about some other expenses and needs that were not included in our budget. So we would love to eliminate fees for students participating in the band program. We want this program to be free and open to all of our children so they can have equal opportunities to access this outstanding experience. The district is also currently pursuing grant funding and other sources of revenue to help offset the cost of the new math curriculum adoption. But as I explained before, that's only if they, if the state makes that available again. If we're not able to fully fund the program through grant funding, we will need to split the cost over two fiscal years, which will impact funds available for the 2027 fiscal year. We also are, our next big adoption is our science program, which needs to be updated. We haven't had a science reveal in, in quite a bit, and I think are kind of overdue for that. We're also deferring necessary replacements for technology equipment, such as teacher laptops and copiers. And if you, if you talk to any staff member about copiers in this building, it's definitely a very coveted item. So, and we're overdue for an update. And that will impact the fiscal 2027 budget because they're just aging out. And they're kind of, you know, have, we've tried to repair them as many, as much as possible at this point. So just kind of in summary, I also just want to say, while we face challenges in balancing priorities and securing funding, we are committed to making thoughtful strategic decisions that support our students and educators. So thank you. I'll just now turn it over to Dr. Lardy.
Yeah. And I would just thank the budget subcommittee for many, many hours of work, poring through budget documents and looking to try to identify, identify the best ways to reduce the budget without compromising education. So at this point, we will turn it to questions from the public. So if you have a question, come to the mic, name, address, and we will try to answer it. And if you don't, because we don't have a vast public with us tonight, we must be competing about something really good tonight on TV. But if you don't, then we will look to close the meeting and move into the school committee meeting.
I just wanted to chime in and say thank you, you know, to everybody who assisted with the budget. This year it was tough. It doesn't look like it's going to get any better in the near future. You know, some of these cuts were really hard. I feel like we all worked really collaboratively. There was a lot of different, I guess, opinions and things going on, but I think we all kind of came to the table and proposed different things. And, you know, our, our main goal is obviously impact to student educational achievement and their environment here. So I think, just to reiterate what you had mentioned about the, the reduction of the teaching position at Freeman Kennedy, that one hit really hard. And I know there's a couple of things in the works to hopefully have some sort of savings financially for next year, and that is our priority in restoring that, that one teaching position. I'd love to restore it at HOD as well, but that's kind of a twofold issue, as you mentioned, because even if we did restore the teaching position, we don't have a classroom to do it. So you really have to kind of choose between one or the other. So yeah, hopefully, you know, in the near future, the state prioritizes, you know, funding for, not rural, but suburban districts as well. Fund a lot of these things we have to cut. And as you can see, you know, just cost of living adjustments takes into account for probably 85% of, of the increase that we're asking. So we don't have much wiggle room. There's not a whole lot to play with, and it's a simple statement.
And another question? All right, I think you can adjourn the, adjourn the public hearing.
Do you have a motion to do that?
What?
Do you have a motion to adjourn it?
Yeah.
Looking for a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All right, we're adjourned. All right, so we'll move right in, calling the March 11 Norfolk School Committee meeting to order. I read the mission statement prior, it is still the same, so I will read it one more time. We do need one more roll call, though.
Grace Lockhead.
Midora Champagne.
Mary Ann Bynum.
Angela Larny.
We have any public comment? I don't believe anyone signed up. No correspondence, so moving to the school committee chair report. I just have one thing to share with you all. So based on the conversations we had last, last meeting about reapplying to the MSBA, and the chart that Ingrid showed tonight and last week, that really showed an increase of suburban district spending below state average, I reached out to both our state reps, and it's not that long, so I'll just read it, because I know people watching the replay don't always have the exhibits. It says, "Good morning, Senator Roush and Representative Vaughn. I hope you're both doing well." I reached out to both our state reps and it's not that long, so I'll just read it because I know people watching the replay don't always have the exhibits. It says, "Good morning, Senator Roush and Representative Vaughn. I hope you're both doing well. As Chair of the Norfolk School Committee, I want to reach out to you both on the following two items. As you know, our school expansion project failed at the ballot last month. The resounding feedback we received from the town was that people realized there is a critical space shortage in our schools and the project plan was sound. However, people simply cannot afford a significant increase to their tax bills with our already high tax rate along with the impact of other needed capital projects such as a fire station and the tri-county expansion debt payments. With the lack of a commercial tax base in our town, our residents are burdened with extremely high costs and taxes. I have heard from many of our seniors firsthand that they are worried about being taxed out of their homes. As a result, one of the options we are pursuing, it still has to be formally voted on by the school committee and select board, is applying to the MSBA yet again for consideration of the project. We've applied several times and have not been invited to participate. However, we would like to try one more time. Would you both be willing to write letters of support for the town and the schools to include in our application packet? If this is something you would be open to, we would certainly supply you with relevant information that would be helpful for you as you craft your letters." Then the second item is, "I would like to invite you both to either our March 11th or April 8th school committee meetings to discuss a growing issue that is impacting our local public schools: inequitable state funding. While it is important that large urban districts receive the financial support they need, it is equally crucial that suburban districts like ours are not overlooked in the distribution of state education funding. Over the years, Norfolk and many of the other towns you serve have faced rising costs for education without a corresponding increase in state support." And then I attached the chart that we saw tonight. "This has forced difficult decisions on school leaders and has placed an undue burden on local taxpayers. The Norfolk schools strive for excellence and have a proven track record of academic success. However, without adequate state funding, we risk falling behind in our ability to provide a well-rounded education to every student. While large urban districts certainly require focused attention, suburban districts should not be left to shoulder an unfair burden. We must ensure that every student, regardless of their zip code, has access to the resources they need to succeed. It would be great if you could both come and speak to the committee about ways we can help you advocate for the schools and the towns you serve. If it makes sense, I'd also be happy to invite representatives from school committees in all the towns you serve that are facing this issue so they can benefit from your thoughts as well. Please let me know if either date would work for you. Thank you and I look forward to your response." So both representatives have agreed to write a letter on our behalf to include in our MSBA application packet if we vote to move that forward tonight. And Ingrid has prepared some great points to include in their letters and I believe you and Grace have seen them as well.
May not have checked your email, but I sent them to you separately for feedback.
It's on email, I did not read it.
Yeah.
She includes some points, so if you have any edits, I can send it to them this week so it's ready before we submit the application. And then the second item, Senator Roush cannot attend, she couldn't attend tonight and she can't attend in April, but she did send me two bills she's working on, Bill S-400, which is, she wants an investigation and study by a special commission to ensure adequate and equitable funding for public education. And then another resolve to establish a special commission on special education funding. So I will send the links to everyone just as information, so you want to take a look and see if it's something we'd be interested in advocating for. I did talk to Representative Vaughn and he is looking at his schedule and is hoping to make the April meeting to come talk to us. He did make the point that Norfolk probably alone can't make a huge impact, so he agrees and suggests that talking to other school committees and trying to get more towns facing the same challenges we are involved could be a good thing. So thinking if he can make April inviting Plainville, Rantham, I don't know if Millet's and Medway are experiencing the same picture, but any local school committees would be.
Millet says.
So that, I just wanted to make you aware that I sent that out to them and they're supportive.
Can you mention like in regards to what we could do of community with other towns to, to kind of push the state or encourage them or is that something we can probably present?
Or will we talk to us about that and just getting people talking instead of single small towns like ours trying to go to the state to say, have more of a group? Yeah. So any questions or comments?
I, I would recommend reaching out to MASC because they had identified funding on several levels as a legislative priority. So I, it may be a way to identify other districts who have expressed an interest in that aren't our neighbors.
Sure.
And I know Rantham, I believe their chair last year had actually written some similar correspondence, not relative to MSBA because they're doing just fine, but relative to funding.
Okay, great. And that is it for me?
All right, I get to start with something positive tonight. So we have Mr. Four Acre here with us in the audience today. And I wanted to share with the committee, I think we sent the letter out to you in the packet, but John was just named as the 2025 co-recipient of the Micah Paul Smith Hall of Fame Award alongside Ashley Nelson Onischuk, who is a choir director in the Medway High School. And only two conductors statewide are selected each year. The award honors Massachusetts music conductors who serve as an inspiration to students, the community, and fellow educators. Mr. Four Acre will be formally inducted in the Massachusetts Music Educators Association in-service contract at, conference at the DCU Center in Worcester at 2:30 on Friday, March 28th, so coming up in a couple of weeks. Mr. Four Acre's been an instrumental music teacher since 1996 at the Freeman Kennedy School where he instructs students in grades four to six. And under his leadership, the school's advanced band has consistently received high rankings at the Micah Concert Festivals. Beyond his role as a teacher, Mr. Four Acre is an accomplished musician who's performed with the Latucia Brass and the Jerry Seiko, Seiko Big Band. Mr. Four Acre currently performs with the Commonwealth Wind Symphony. Induction into the Micah Paul Smith Hall of Fame is based on several criteria, including a minimum of 10 years as a Massachusetts conductor, a variety of conducting experience, involvement in Micah activities, and a demonstrated commitment to professionalism in music education at the state and local levels. So we wanted to offer our congratulations to Mr. Four Acre tonight on behalf of the school committee and the Norfolk Public Schools. Congratulations on this wonderful honor. And the upcoming Micah Festival, did you say is going to be recorded? The, on the, great. So we'd love to have a copy of that that I can share with the committee. So, thank you. Next on the agenda tonight is the discussion of the FY 2026 budget request and followed by a vote of the school committee. So I don't know if people had questions from the committee on the presentation tonight that we can answer.
I have two. One is easy and the other one is inherently a not easy question. How much, after using 50,000 from the Special Education Stabilization Fund, how much will be lost in the Special Education Stabilization?
75,000. So enough for one placement. But that is, that wasn't in the PowerPoint, but that is in the budget. We are, we are seeing a significant increase and that is one way that we are hoping to try to balance that. That will require both of the school committee and of the select board in order to apply those funds next year.
The second question is relative to the new curriculum adoption. And I guess it's kind of a question in two parts. I know we did a segmented payment process with the ELA curriculum. What was the breakdown of that? So like what were we paying? And then I know some of it was funded through capital, like how did, how did we break that apart?
So it was pretty much split in half. We budgeted for half of it and then we requested the balance in fall town capital, which was appropriated. So we will be paying for the full ELA curriculum this year, so we don't have any obligations carrying forward for ELA into fiscal 26.
My concern with the math is that it feels like we're paying a lot less on the front end and there doesn't seem to be, I mean, if we're looking for another $125,000 going into the next school year, is there some thought that we might look to capital funding for that in the fall or is it just anticipated that that will be carried forward as an expense?
I think that'll be a discussion for the committee as we head into the fall. So we're budgeting for half of it, which is 125. You see a 25,000 addition. We had 100,000 in the curriculum adoption line last year, so what you see in the presentation is the change. But it is, we will be looking for another 125. We could go to the fall town meeting and request, or request that as part of capital, but we also have some critical technology replacement needs. The next curriculum review cycle for next fiscal year will be science, but I don't think that we can, we've just adopted a new ELA curriculum, we'll be adopting a new math. We need to give our teachers a break for a year. So I think we could dedicate the fiscal 27 curriculum money to funding the, the balance of the math curriculum and reserve town, town meeting and town capital for the capital items from the budget. But we can discuss that as the, the financial picture shapes up a little bit with the town as we enter the fall.
Okay. And then just a third question. Has there been, and I'm not saying that they would not, I'm just questioning if there's been any dialogue. And I think actually the town administrator mentioned this at the advisory meeting recently, some confirmation or conversation with the select board and the town that if Chapter 70 money comes in higher, it will not be a struggle to have that allocated back into our budget.
Yes, so we did have that conversation. Right now, the projections are based on $75 a student. Last year, that money was raised to 104 and so there was an additional appropriation that we, had the select board agree would be appropriated to fall because Chapter 70 funds are intended for education. They're, they can't be spent on other functions. The educational funding, Chapter 70 for King Philip, because they're a regional school district, any increases in Chapter 70 go directly to them where elementary Chapter 70 money goes to the town to appropriate. So we did have preliminary conversations and I believe the intent is the same. I will be at the select board meeting next Wednesday to talk about the MSBA, oh, next Tuesday to talk about the MSBA project, but I, I would like to talk about that as well. But the intent in the, that we have heard so far is that yes, it would be re-appropriated. If we know that dollar number before we head into the summer, which we did this year, we may be able to reappropriate and hire that additional third grade teacher. The additional Chapter 70 revenue this year funded the additional first grade we added over the summer.
That covers me for now. Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
And I maybe should know this, but can you help me understand the additional math paraprofessionals? Because when you look at the scores, we score lower in ELA than we do in math and with the new ELA curriculum adoption, I know that's been a heavy lift. And so I would almost think we would want to support that while we're implementing the other and then what if that?
It's a good question. Vicky, I don't know if you want to touch base on that, but we have already our screeners, assessments that we've been administering, that our local assessments are showing an upward trend in response to the new program and in our informal measures that we use. So we expect that those ELA scores are going to come up. We also have reading specialists and we're able to provide intervention services to students that are struggling across the grades with the reading, with the support staff that we currently have. We are stretched thin for math and so we are not able to allocate the service time that we need to all of the students that would benefit from them. So the greater, the greater shortage in terms of intervention staff was in the math area, but do you want to add to that, Vicky, or is?
Yeah, and, and like one of the concerns is that with the lift that it takes to implement a new program, our math specialists also support teachers as coaches, they support within limitation of the program. So, and the need that we're seeing especially in our fifth and sixth grade students, we just right now don't have enough people on hand to be able to give the level of support in mathematics that we would need.
Okay, so they're already stretched thin and we feel the trajectory on ELA is going pretty well.
It is, that we've seen, right? Even though like it's not, like I said, it's not quite showing up at MCAS yet, but like our district benchmarks data, like the, the number of students that are in the needs category have, are decreasing, you know what I mean? So, which is great to see, you know? And we, we're not quite seeing the same thing in math, especially in the upper grade. So we're trying to keep the gap, not why, you know, we want to kind of keep the positive trajectory, especially like I said, with the lift of the new math program, we want to make sure that they're efficiently staffed, you know?
That's helpful, thank you.
And the math professional is what we cut last year, right?
What was that?
The math professional is what we cut last year.
Yes, yeah, we did reduce one. And we also, as Vicky said, will be implementing a new math program next year. So that will also support the implementation process. I don't know what's buzzing, but.
I know.
Hopefully it fixes because we. Yeah, we don't have capital money, so hopefully it's just in the background there. Any other budget questions?
Yeah, I, I have to ask it. The number that the town has been populating in all of their public meetings for the schools is 4%.
Yep.
This is about 4%, so I, you know, just what's the status of that dialogue?
Yeah, we continue to work collaboratively with the town. Their preliminary number for the schools is 4%. They know that we are not at 4%. We are continuing to look at areas that we may be able to reduce further. We're going to talk later in the meeting about an early retirement incentive, which we hope the school committee will approve and that we will send out. If that generates additional savings, we can reduce the budget without cutting further things. So that's one area that we're looking at. If that doesn't work, we're hoping that the town will be able to also find some additional revenue and meet us partway. But if we have to make further cuts, then we would have to come back in the April meeting once we have a better sense of how the early retirement incentive goes with additional recommendations for the committee.
And we talked about in regards to the number and the percentage that we would be presenting to the town. Last year, we came in with like one-time funding from the Special Education Stabilization Funds and we made it pretty clear when we presented that, that, you know, this is one-time funding, so when we come back next year and the percentage is higher, don't hold us to do that. So really it's probably closer to like what, 2.5, 3%?
Yeah, so if you, if you added the one-time funds we appropriated to fund this fiscal year, which was stabilization, a one-time tuition account plus an extra Chapter 70, the actual increase from this year's fiscal spending to next year that we're asking for is 2.6%. So it, we, we've shared that with the town because I think people say 4.5 without recalling that those funds were added, even though we were very transparent and raised that concern last year in agreeing to use stabilization funds. So hopefully that will help us as we work forward.
They were pretty transparent in their response to that as well. If I recall.
Yeah. Just a question on the governor's supplemental budget. I know we're still waiting on that reimbursement number. It was $104 per day up until December 31st. We don't have a new number throughout the remainder of the year, but anticipating that it stays around the same, that'll just help us get closer to breaking even. Is that right? There's not going to be any?
So it depends on what the final dollar amount is. So the supplemental budget, my understanding is the supplemental budget was approved with funding for reimbursement to districts for students that are temporarily housed at the shelter. The dollar amount of reimbursement hasn't been finalized. If we, we are, as you know, we're about $100,000 over in salaries and costs to meet the needs of those students, plus we have a deficit in special education this year. We're counting on that funding to come into the district to close the deficit that we have in this fiscal year. If it is appropriated at $104 a day, we may have some additional funds that could also help with the reduction because we can apply additional revenue to prepay collaborative tuitions. We could, if we saw additional revenue, decide not to use the stabilization if we are able to offset that. So that's, that would be information to come. That said, what happens at the shelter is really, we're not sure. I mean, the, the enrollment, it's based on enrollment and the number of days students are in session and that's been changing, that picture's been changing. So if we have fewer students, that will also affect the reimbursement rate. So it's, it's pretty big unknown right now. Any other questions? We just need a motion to vote to approve the recommended budget.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 budget.
Yeah, as, yes, as it is, this budget request at 4.59% will go forward to the advisory board. We'll be presenting that next Wednesday night. After the advisory board process, they're going to meet with all the town departments. Throughout that time, the town, we'll be continuing to work with the town. If we are asked to make further reductions in order to balance the budget, the budget subcommittee will meet after the advisory board, look at that, make further reductions to try to balance. We would have to come back with additional recommendations to the school committee in April for a final budget number that would go forward to May town meeting. April for a final budget number that would go forward to May town meeting.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. All right, a lot of the next items should be fairly quick. The next item I have for you tonight is an early retirement incentive, and what we would like to do in order to effectively utilize any available end-of-year funds. So again, this depends on reimbursement from the state for the shelter, and it depends on our application for extraordinary relief to the state for funding for special education. If we have end-of-year funds, we would like to offer an early retirement incentive to effectively utilize those funds to generate savings in next year's budget. An early retirement incentive has to be collectively bargained and negotiated with the Norfolk Teachers Association. We have the budget subcommittee work to put together a proposal. We have shared it with the teachers association. We've reached agreement on terms and are bringing this to the school committee to vote. The terms of the incentive plan that we would like to offer would be, to be eligible, a unit member would have to have completed 10 or more years of service within Norfolk Public Schools as of June 30th. They could not have already provided prior notice of intent to retire in order to be eligible for the incentive. We've got some timelines in here where people would have to provide notice if they're interested in participating. It will depend on what we have available for funds, how many we can accept into the program. Once people are notified they've been accepted, they would have to submit papers indicating a retirement date noted on June 30th, 2025, and there is a financial incentive, a one-time payment of $500 per year of service in the Norfolk Public Schools with a maximum payout of $10,000. This is very similar to the early retirement incentive that KP has recently issued. The school committee needs to vote to officially offer this package. If you agree to that, then we would release it tomorrow to our staff and get people a couple of weeks to consider whether or not they want to participate. We would not notify people of final acceptance into the program till May 1st, where we will have a better projection for end-of-year balances. Have to take any questions? Why are you putting this on the mic? Sorry. I'm slamming the microphone by accident.
Looking for a motion to approve the early retirement incentive as written.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think this next one is probably pretty quick, too. By, because of the interschool, just, the school choice law, mass general law, the committee has the right to withdraw from participating in school choice. You have to have a public discussion and public vote prior to June 1st. School choice would, basically, you would decide that we are going to make seats available in Norfolk at a tuition basis for non-community residents. If you offer those seats, students have the right to remain in the Norfolk Public Schools throughout the end of sixth grade. Obviously, we have no space, we don't have these seats to offer. Also, as I indicated in the memo, the cost of educating students in Norfolk is often higher than what we would receive in tuition through the school choice program. So it is my recommendation that the school committee vote not to participate in the school choice program for fiscal 20, for 26, 25, 26 school year.
Looking to a motion to withdraw from the school choice program.
I move that we withdraw and Norfolk not participate in the school choice program for the 25, 26 school year.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Next one, also a nice, easy item. So we voted to approve the 25, 26 school calendar at our last meeting, and as we were preparing to post the calendar and send it out, we realized we had an extra day in the calendar that nobody caught. So we, the student school year is 180 days, not 181. We had 181 days in the calendar, so we took the extra day out, making the last day of school June 15th rather than the, which is a Friday, rather than Monday, June 12th, I'm sorry, rather than Monday the 15th. Additionally, we just added the open house dates for FK that hadn't been finalized on the last calendar year. So I'm looking to revote the calendar with a one less day and designated days for the open house for FK. Second.
Any further discussion?
Every year it's something. Aye.
Aye.
The next item in your packet, as we talked about during the budget presentation, we are looking to restructure our business office. Barbara Boone has been our district assistant business manager for a number of years, and she has recently accepted another position she will be leaving at the end of March. In talking with Miriam and with our administrative team, we are recommending at this time that we restructure the position, and instead of hiring a new assistant district business manager, we convert that position to be a business office specialist, which will primarily have payroll functions as well as accounts payable. We think that that will generate a healthy savings for the district. It'll also accomplish our goal of taking payroll out of the HR office, which is not an efficient way to, to process the payroll. It really belongs in the business accounting side. So school committee by, I don't know, by, by district policy approved job descriptions. So we've included in your packet a revised job description for a business office specialist that indicates those new specific duties. Looking for a motion to approve the new job description. We have advertised the position and would like to begin the search process and interviewing, so we'd like to have a final job description to be able to share with prospective candidates.
Looking for a motion to approve the job descriptions as written.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Can I ask a question?
You can.
Sorry, the HR person in me. So given the fact that this is a downgraded position or more junior role, do we feel like anything's going to slip through the cracks that's happening today that won't be able to happen in the future, or we feel like this individual will be able to handle everything?
So this is just, this is just the business part. We haven't done the job description revision yet for the HR person, but we do think that we can cover the, the primary functions of that job. It will be picking up the payroll piece. Right now, it just supports payroll. It would have more ownership for that, but I think also Miriam does more of the grant work, and so that will shift more to the business consultant versus the assistant business manager. I'd turn it to you if there's other things that you...
Yeah, the only other thing that I can think of is some of the student data reporting, which would be in collaboration with the technology department, and they would probably have more ownership of that piece.
Okay, so they can lean in on that.
Right.
Okay. I just hired a junior accountant.
We're going to have to look at, so it doesn't, it's too fresh in my brain.
We're going to have to look at reallocating some other office time to support the tech team with that state reporting. It's pretty significant, but I don't think it needs to land in the business office.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor?
All right, the next one, you're about to have a very lengthy vote, but as everybody is aware, the school expansion building project did not pass at the ballot in February, on February 2nd. I think as Lisa summarized earlier in her email to the state reps, the primary feedback we've heard is that the project is critically needed. People recognize the challenges as we looked at the budget presentation, almost 200 students, that's, that's a pretty significant amount of growth that we've absorbed in a short period of time. I think people recognize the issue. The biggest challenge is the impact on taxpayers of a new large-scale project following the fire station and the tri-county. We recently met as a school building committee to debrief from the election and talk about what would be the best next steps. We've also met with the, had some preliminary conversations with the town and the select board to, to think about where we should go from here. What the recommendation of the building committee was is that we should move forward with applying again to mass, the mass school building authority. Lisa talked about the state reps being willing to write letters of support. We also have a full feasibility study we did since the last round of applications that we can add to our packet. Applying to MSBA, if Norfolk were selected to participate with the MSBA, they would cost share the funding. And the Freeman Kennedy School and the H. Olive Day are both projects that we did with the partnership of MSBA, and they were funded at about a percentage, at about 55% state funding. It would reduce the cost of any expansion almost in half. Applying to MSBA does not commit us to moving forward with the program, so there's no risk in applying, but it could be a strong benefit if MSBA chose Norfolk to participate going forward. So because there's no risk to applying, and the primary concern we've heard from the public was the, the high cost of the project, the building committee recommended moving forward with submitting an application to MSBA. In order to apply to MSBA, we need a vote of both the school committee and the select board. It is scheduled for vote on the select board meeting next Tuesday night, I think that's March 18th, and we are bringing it to the school committee for consideration tonight. Madora Grace, I don't know if you guys have anything to add from the building committee perspective?
I think you summed it up pretty well. I, you know, I mean, obviously, the discussions we're having tonight, even if we had the money to hire a teacher at HOD, there is nowhere to put a teacher at HOD. Something will need to be done in the coming years to address the issue, fully understand the response from the town. A lot of capital projects have clustered together simultaneously at a time when cost of living is going up for everybody. So get it, but I think that, you know, this is one step that might be able to mitigate the major concerns that we heard from folks who, who had major concerns about the project. So I think that it would be totally beneficial to submit the application. We'll be cautiously optimistic that we might get a different response and, and, you know, kind of take whatever feedback we get and see what happens.
And I think one other thing with MSBA, if we were invited to participate, they would assign a new architectural firm, a new designer, and we would have to repeat the feasibility study. So during that process, adjustments can be made if we're seeing different patterns in enrollment or other thoughts come forward as we're in that design phase.
It does, I mean, just for the sake of clarity, it does create a protracted timeframe as a result of that. So I, I think, no matter what, something does need to be done. I think this is the best first step, but I think this committee and other committees in town will need to continue having conversations, not just about a permanent solution, but what will need to happen in the intervening timeframe when some other type of solution will need to be discussed and addressed. I'll save that for the next thing.
I'm not going to go there, so I think that's...
Transparency.
So MSBA has fairly lengthy required vote language, so we, Lisa, you just have to read the, the full vote language for the MSBA, but it's on the second side of your packet, if we have a motion to move forward with that.
Oh, I move to move forward with submitting an application to MSBA subject to the parameters of all of it.
I'll second.
So I'm going to read this as written, and then it requires a roll call vote, so you just say your name and how you're voting underscored. All right, here we go. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on March 11th, 2025, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the school committee of Norfolk, Massachusetts, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the statement of interest form dated April 2025 for the Freeman Kennedy School located at 70 Boardman Street, Norfolk, Massachusetts, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Elimination of existing overcrowding and prevention of severe overcrowding expected to result from increased enrollments, which must be substantiated. The district is currently out of space at the H. Olive Day School and will have to raise the maximum class size next year to accommodate enrollment. The computer lab and music room have already been converted to general education classrooms. The district has also relocated our district's special education offices in order to create additional classroom space, subdivided the library, and converted both the server room and the teacher copy room into instructional spaces. Increased enrollment due to significant building and construction has resulted in severe overcrowding at the H. Olive Day School and is expected to result in similar conditions at the Freeman Kennedy School in the next few years. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the statement of interest form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the town of Norfolk to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. So we can go do the roll call vote, we can start.
Is it aye, yea, or yes?
I think it's aye and aye.
Peter Schwalder, I vote aye.
Maureen Bead, aye.
Praise Lockhead, aye.
Madora Champagne, aye.
Lisa Sheldon, aye.
I will present that to the select board next Tuesday night, and if they similarly vote to approve submitting that, we'll move forward with that application process the beginning of April. Next, I have a brief update on the Bay State Shelter. So as we talked about at our last school committee meeting, we had been seeing some increasing enrollment. We currently have 52 students enrolled in the Norfolk Public Schools from the Bay State Shelter. We had two students exit this week and no new students enroll this week. We only have one student expected to enroll next week, and we have five that we are waiting on departure dates. I think that, as we shared, I think it's important to note, and as I, I had shared with you in an email update prior to February vacation, we are now exceeding the maximum class size in three of our kindergarten classrooms, so we have 22 students in three kindergarten classrooms. We do have two students in kindergarten expected to depart, and we are waiting, as I said, on the confirmation of move dates for those students. In the interim, we have worked to try to find ways to support those larger class sizes. We have reallocated our building sub at the H. Olive Day to support the kindergarten classrooms that have class sizes over 21 when that person is available. As I shared, we have a sub shortage, so there's some days that they have to cover a classroom. We additionally have hired a paraprofessional substitute last week as well as this week, so that we have an additional pair of hands to support classroom teachers, and we'll continue to do that. We have advertised for a long-term sub-paraprofessional position. We, we posted that a week ago. We are continuing to gather applications for that position, but as you know, we are in a significant budget deficit, and we don't, I don't feel we can appoint or hire someone until we have confirmation on what we're expecting in reimbursement funding. Hopefully, that's going to come in this week and we can make some decisions, but we can't overspend our budget. So if we were to hire somebody and we don't get that funding, we're going to be in a position where we're having to lay off staff or, or deal with more significant end-of-year strategies in order to try to balance the budget before the end of the fiscal year. So that is where we are right now. We continue to work with the Department of Ed. We generally have update meetings every Thursday. Tomorrow's meeting was postponed, but Lisa and I, Justin, Casanova Davis, the town administrator, chair of the select board, fire chief, police chief, are all on those calls with the governor's office, the state, and the Department of Ed. We have routinely asked, I would say every meeting, whether the, it is still anticipated that the shelter will close in June, and we have been advised every time we ask that there are no plans to extend the shelter beyond that. At this time, there have been no conversations, and they are still anticipating an end-of-June closing date. I don't know if there's anything else from the meetings that, that I missed, or...
What's our total?
52. Yeah. 20 at Freeman and 32 at H. Olive Day.
Did we call around January where we were at?
So when we closed in December, before the break, we were at about 20 students. So the enrollment, when we came back, I think I sent you guys an email, because when we came back, we had 12 students queued to enroll that entered the shelter over the winter break, and since then, it was, you know, eight students a week for, for a series of weeks. The shelter went from having about 170 people to 370 over that winter break, so they were now at full capacity. So I think that's what drove that, that big enrollment shift. The last, as I said, the last two weeks, it's really dwindled. We only, we had no new students this week, and we only have one for next week. So I don't know if that's stabilizing now. We do continue to see that it's taking longer once students and families have leases and funding approved. In the past, within a week, they've moved. We're seeing that timeline stretch a little bit. I know they were understaffed for a while because of illness among staff members, and there were some restructuring done, so I don't know if that was causing the delays. We were planning to ask about that tomorrow, but the meeting was postponed, but the exit process seems to be taking a little bit longer than it has in the past. But the exit process seems to be taking a little bit longer than it has in the past.
Several of our kindergarten classrooms being over policy. What are the repercussions for that? Are we doing to prioritize, you know, school committees or who look at those class sizes?
Well, I think it's probably premature for that because, I mean, under the federal law, if students are living in town, we have to bring them in. We can't add another kindergarten class at this time of the school year because you can't add a class just for new students. You would have to reshuffle the entire deck and add. And we don't have classrooms to put them in. So, there really is no option. As I said, there's two students scheduled to move out. We don't know that that's gonna be a long-term situation. We have hired additional staffing. The one time prior where we've had more than 21 students in kindergarten classes, the way the committee addressed it was to approve lifting the cap, and we hired a paraprofessional to share their time between the two classrooms that had 22 students. So, what we've done temporarily is to follow that same protocol. So, we put the same support in place. I don't expect those classes are gonna remain at 22. If they do, then, and when we get confirmation of that, the funding, we may come to the committee and request that we hire another full-time person to support those additional classrooms. But I think, given that there isn't another option, we legally have to bring students in. We would if they were students from Norfolk. We had one first grade last year that hit 22 because students enroll late in the school year, and they have to go into an existing class. So, I don't think we want to raise the policy limit because we are continuing to advocate to DESI that we are at capacity. They need to come up with other solutions. But I do think proactively, we should put the supports in place that we did when we were in this situation prior, just with Norfolk students.
Our school, obviously, we have to involve and accept them.
Yeah, I've reached out to DESI to make them aware. We are at our maximum class size so that they can, you know, consider how they're bringing families in and age of students. I wouldn't recommend lifting the cap. I think we are, I think it's important that we know that we're over the class size limit, that we put proactively staffing and supports in place. But I don't want to create a situation where we're growing capacity that we don't really have. Any other questions on Bay State? The last thing in your packet. The schools have been talking with the PTO and are interested in running a different kind of fundraising-type event. It's a back-to-school supply drive. As we talked about in the budget, we're reducing a lot of our supply and account and supply lines. Additionally, in the past, over the summer, we send out a classroom wish list of a lot of items, and people gather materials and send them in. What they were thinking is if they did the supply drive earlier, then we would know what we have, and maybe teachers could reduce those wish lists to just specific, unique items they might need for the classroom. Other districts have done this successfully. You can see the flyers that they'd like to share out. This is totally voluntary, but they thought it was a nice way to maybe bring in some of those donations that families are looking to make and be able to reallocate and maybe make the back-to-school shopping a little bit lighter in the fall. So, we're looking, because it's a fundraiser, for school committee vote to approve moving forward with the supply drive.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Just thank you to the PTO.
Yeah, I think this is a great idea.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That's it, let me.
Let me, okay. So, moving on to committee and liaison reports, going to the policy subcommittee.
So, we have two items for your consideration this evening. The first is an incidental change to policy KHA, which relates to public solicitation in schools. You can see there was some strike-through language. As you may recall, this and then the subsequent policy that we're looking at relating to public solicitation and fundraising in the schools, the goal of the subcommittee was to tighten up our existing policies and make them work well with one another to the best of their ability. So, for Exhibit 9, which is the incidental change, we would be looking for a vote. And then for Exhibit 10, which is policy JJE, the student fundraising activities, that's just a second reading.
And we're just taking out redundant language in KHA. It was, it referred to the PTO and the Teachers Association as school groups to be governed by the policy on staff solicitations. We don't have a policy on staff solicitations. So, that language, that was in the MSBA recommended language, but we don't have that. We consider public solicitations are general fundraisers, and then fundraisers, JJE is things that involve students. So, it covers both, and they can approach it like any other group.
Looking for a motion to approve the changes to policy KHA. Any further discussion?
I'm ready to be done discussing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, as I said, JJE is no action required tonight, just a second reading.
Is this the one that the questionnaire is going to be attached to? Are those two completely different?
This is the one the questionnaire would be associated with. The most recent changes, as we were kind of discussing how best to encapsulate some of the concerns we've heard, I think the language was a little overly broad that was initially being discussed by the subcommittee, that it might, striking out this language at the bottom, right, prevents the policy from being interpreted as prohibiting something like the book fair, where a student is technically engaging in a monetary transaction. The goal is to have students not be required to fundraise. So, they should not be.
Selling products.
Selling products. They should not be, you know, required in any way to procure money. And, you know, I mean, like, it's the fundraiser, the book fair is done. I mean, it's done digitally, so I guess they're not technically handling money anymore. But it's, the goal was to allow for events such as that, which are, you know, meaningful fundraisers for the school, but to eliminate situations where there might be some discomfort around other transactions involving students.
So, this.
The form that you're talking to, so the third paragraph down, it says, "Other fundraising activities that would involve students in the fundraising process shall be submitted to the superintendent and school committee for approval." We could reference the form there if it's helpful, but that was the intent. That's why it would be attached to this. So, we could reference, I think it's JJE-1 or something like that. We can reference the form there if that's helpful for the third reading.
And then, my next question was the students should not be directly involved in the sale of products. Would that prohibit, like, students helping at a bake sale at an open house?
I mean, I think the intent was that they're not going door-to-door.
Yeah, I get the intent.
So, if a student was with their parent at a PTO bake sale table,
Right.
I think that would be an extraordinarily overly broad application of this policy. But that's my interpretation, so.
If they were, if they were doing it alone, it would be. We could, I mean, we could add the sale of commercial products if you think that clarifies that.
So, just that.
We don't often have, I think, students unsupervised. I mean, they'd be with their parents, so I would think the parents are handling the transaction.
Yeah, I think, I think it just says.
Well, it would be, I mean, an open house, to your point, would be a school event.
Yeah.
So, it's, you know, it's not an event sponsored by the PTO or something like that. But I think it's, generally speaking, not the school or the student. Like, any instance where a student, I'm just trying to think of how I could be wrong when I say this, but any instance of a student selling something in that environment would be explicitly involving an adult of some type because it would be at the PTO bake sale table. So, it would be me telling my daughter, "You're sitting here, stop complaining, sell some brownies." Right? And at that point, it's not, it's me-directed.
Right, I was just wondering because it says students should not be directly involved in the sale of products. Like, just does that open up to anything?
Well, some of those are evening events that could still be prohibited. But we could say.
I think the word "commercial" is probably fine.
So, what we're trying to prohibit is, but some fundraisers used to be like, students would go door-to-door and sell magazine subscriptions or get pledges for participating in different events. So, we don't want that for safety reasons. We could say, the policy subcommittee could look at this again and recommend an edit that would clarify that.
You could say students should not be.
Independently.
I was gonna say independently involved or direct, you know, independently, yeah, directly or independently involved in the sale of products.
And I'm wondering too, just is it the sale of products or not? If there is, it should be sale of, I don't know if "service" is the right word, but if it's, you know, if you're running a fun run and you're selling the laps.
We can say products or services.
That's not like a product, but you're selling, you're raising money for how many laps you're gonna run, so that's kind of like a sale of a service.
Do they do that?
For the fun run, yeah, it was.
Do they?
You could pay by how many laps you run.
Why don't we take another look at that at the policy subcommittee and come back with recommendations for clarifying language for that piece?
I think you could also probably work that into the approval of the event itself.
For the specific consent of the superintendent, just referred to in the last.
Yeah, that's, the catch-all was.
That was the.
It does allow for some degree of flexibility should there be some unusual circumstances not contemplated where the superintendent can consent to some deviation from policy. But we can certainly.
Yeah, we could look at it. Because we could say something like students should not be involved, directly involved in the sale of products without prior approval through the fundraising approval process or something. We can, we can look at it and come back with something. Budget subcommittee probably doesn't have anything since we monopolized the meeting tonight.
Anything from the building committee?
No, I think just the spokes. Wait and see what happens.
King Philip, we met last week. We also voted to approve applications to the MSBA for both the middle school and the high school. But it was a very short meeting, that's all we voted on. Any liaison update?
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Is that based upon condition of the buildings for expansion, for enrollment, or repair?
Okay. Roof repair, right?
Right.
Yeah.
So, just a reminder of Norfolk Lions, the talent show coming up Thursday, April 10th, 2025.
Young performers.
Young.
No, no, it's a King Philip. Registration by April 3rd.
I spoke with the new leader of NPL, and she mentioned that the Easter Bunny Breakfast is going to be April 12th, which is a super fun event, especially for those with younger children. Tickets are being released tomorrow night, so I'm gonna go pretty quick.
Nothing really from CPAC other than the Casino Royale fundraiser. Looking like it's gonna be really fun. And that's PTO's one, so.
I have not heard.
For the PTO, they funded a number of grants at their March meeting, including aperture assessment tools, technology-based math courses, headphones, occupational therapy tools, seating, a social skills program, and playground equipment. And they hosted two trivia events this month, and they have another trivia and movie night coming up, and the Casino Royale fundraiser, April 5th. And then, I, it wasn't mentioned here in CPAC as well, but I got the registration for the Active Kids program at King Philip and, not King Philip, sorry, at Freeman and at HOD. It's that morning program, the morning, we call it morning gym in my house, but it's a fun.
Box.
Oh, it used to be a box. Yeah. It's a really fun program. My kids like it a lot for anyone that's interested. It's, the registration is in your email.
BOK, S, not BOX, they're not boxing.
Yeah.
It's good for school activity.
All right, moving on to new items. You should have your minutes from the February 25th meeting. We just need to vote on that. Looking for a motion to approve the as written.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And our next meeting is set for April 8th. So, work for everyone. And I will let you all know when I hear Mark it, so hopefully you can make that. That is all I have under new items. If anyone has anything else. I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.